Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Tonight, I'd like to like to just start by introducing everybody that we have on our on our board. I don't know if no particular order, but we have Pam Delaney, we have David Fader, Jason Babcock Steiner, John Osowski, Karen Altman, and I wanted to let everybody know that we did accept the resignation of one of our board members, Laura Civil, who has been on the board since 2003, and we just want to thank her for 18 years of service on the on the board. It was a long time, and she's moved on to a new new location. So we thank her for her service.
Thank you, Bill. I agree. I appreciate you saying that. She was great.
Yeah. Could we start tonight's meeting by calling the roll, please?
Altman.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Fader.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Babcock Steiner.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
All present.
All right. Thank you. I did receive the meeting minutes from our March meeting, but I believe I received them this afternoon.
I think you need some more time.
Yeah.
I was thinking about doing in May. We did receive Tracy was out of the office.
Okay.
So we'll have to do the minutes in May, just to give you more time to look at them.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we have public hearings and want to know, Mr. Secretary of these tonight have been properly advertised.
The public hearings were properly advertised in the Brighton Pittsburgh Post of April 15th, 2021.
Thank you. I will hear those public hearings now. First application tonight is 4P011, the application of the Country Club of Rochester owner for site plan modification.
Has been adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's been adjourned.
My apologies. That's going to.
Yep.
And then so the one you're showing is actually application 4PO2-21, and this is 2290 East Avenue Properties LLC for site plan modification.
And Bill, if I could just make sure people are clear that application 4PO121, the application of the Country Club of Rochester has been adjourned to the May 19th meeting at the applicant's request.
So do we have, I thought I saw Mr. Sweetrock.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Yep. Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. Also with me is Troy Beckwith with Caliber Properties. We're here tonight requesting a modified site plan for East Avenue Properties. We we were here before you guys a year or so ago with the improvements that we did to 23 East Avenue where we added the addition and that accessible ramp to the first floor. We've also been in front of the Historic Architectural Board for the Carriage House, which we are doing the renovations for now to the existing building, and that was approved by HAC. What we're here tonight to talk to the planning board about is we're looking for a site plan modification to add those eight parking spots near 2300 and move some of those accessible spaces so we can get have that accessible route right into the first floor at 2300. And then so eight additional parking spots. And then the other thing that we're doing is we're enhancing accessible ramp to the carriage house, which is on the other side of the parking lot. And basically making that accessible into the the floor of the building. And there's a there's also an elevation of that that we prepared and provided to the I think it's the next one. Maybe there's another one, but um. Anyways, that's the there. That's the plan view, but we also had done a new elevation as well. So we're looking to do those couple of modifications out here, additional parking as well as an accessible ramp to the carriage house. And we're going in front of Historic Preservation tomorrow night to just to discuss that ramp and the because they've already proved the carriage house. Like I said, they just need to do the certificate of appropriateness for that ramp in front of the building. So I think that is about it. We also, I think there were some questions that water service is not six inch. It's a one and a half inch water service that's going into the carriage house with the backflow. That six inches mislaid, which I think there was a couple of comments. I talked to the town engineer about that. But that's about it for, I think, the application. We got county planning comments. I didn't see anything there that was really was anything that they didn't really have any concerns with anything that I saw. But Troy and I are here to help answer any questions that the board might have regarding the site plan modification.
Thank you. So so link, just to be be clear, it is both the parking and the and the accessible ramp to the that is is the the request.
Yes.
Okay, all right. My I think the only questions here, you you have some light poles under construction that are that are waiting to be installed, but the appear to be in on the on the access drive in. And I I noticed that is kind of sticking out of the embankment that is proposed to be cut into to create the parking spaces. Wasn't sure if that was a temporary pipe because on this it it looks like it's on the on your plan. It looks like it's supposed to been connected into a into a manhole or maybe just a.
You're breaking up a little on me, Bill. And are you talking about the storm? The storm manholes there? The two pipes that are going through there?
No, I apologize if I'm breaking up. I just noticed there is a about a six inch green pipe sticking out of the going to cut into to create the 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 parking spaces, daylighting out into the onto. I didn't know if that was supposed to be buried.
I can speak on if you'd like.
Sure. Go ahead, Troy.
Troy, could you give your name?
Troy Backless Senior.
Thank you.
The pipe that you see is for the the gutter drainage that's on actually 2290. The downspouse around the front of the building, and we were getting some water issues in the front of the building. So we ran it around to daylight for now, prior to dumping into the catch basin because of this project gets approved that we'd have to dig back in farther anyway and get it below grade to get it into our catch basin or dry well. So whether this is approved tonight or not, at some point, this that will go into our dry well on our property.
Okay.
I didn't want to have to do it twice. So we just left it to daylight at this point.
Understood. Okay. Yeah, I just didn't didn't see it on the drawing and was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay. And at this point, you doesn't appear that you're proposing any curbing at the bottom of slope on the at the front of the parking spaces. This happened. I think it's a lot of construction out there, but it does appear that folks don't stay consistently on your pavement and you know, you're getting some rutting around the edges without any without any curb wondered if if that's true or if I'm dismissing that there's whether there's curb there or not.
There's not no curb. We showed in that, but if it's certainly something that needs to be, or you recommending that we would probably be in favor of that.
Okay. And that that's it for my questions. Other board members have questions?
I'm all set.
Yeah, this is this. This is John. I have some questions. I I have a question about the handicap ramp and the the walkway in front of the entrance and the three steps going up to it. And did you consider putting in a universal accessible ramp for everybody to use versus having a separate 8% slope handicap ramp? Because if you put in one sloping entrance with a 5% slope, you you wouldn't need to have a separate handicap ramp and looking at the construction status of the of the carriage house, it looks like you took out the floor slab. So you may may have an opportunity to adjust the finished floor elevation and perhaps consider a universal accessible ramp for entrance instead of having a a separate entrance for able separate stairs and and slab and an entrance for able bodied purses and a separate ramp for people who are ambulatory impaired. Was that given consideration or or not?
Um, I mean, this there, I mean, we just the way the the way the existing structure is, we have to get them up to grade there somehow with keeping the parking area. So it's sort of, I don't know if you guys have the building elevation there. Is there any way that there's a how that's, I mean, you don't have the new one. It doesn't look like. I don't know if I can. Can I share my screen?
Yes. Let him share the screen, Jeff.
Okay. He can't share his screen when I'm sharing my screen.
Okay.
Okay, anyways, so but the the answer is, we looked at it, and this was seemed to be the best way to get an accessible way to the carriage house as well as, you know, the the steps would provide. So they're all going in the same access door in the front there. They just needed, we just needed to make grade up from the pavement to get to get up to the area where the front door is. And then there's steps on both sides to get up. So everybody is going in the front door. There wasn't a a real easier way to change grade without the solution that we've come up with.
So you are you going with the same finished floor elevation that the original carriage house had? Is that what you started with the 554.5 or whatever the number is?
Correct. The floor is staying the same.
All right. So you you did. You didn't consider lowering the floor so they wouldn't have to have such a such a foot and a half grade elevation difference between the parking lot and the entrance into the building then?
Correct. And that, you know, we also went through historical review on the the building changes that you see there. And now we're just trying to get the ramp to make sure we can get the accessible ramp into that elevation of of the building improvements that we're doing.
All right. Well, I I think I think you missed an opportunity, but I won't belabor the point. Thanks. Thanks for answering my questions.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Ramsey, do you have questions?
So just a few. Will the new parking spaces be lighted, Link?
Um. Right. We have. We have some lighting out there. There's lighting on the side and everything. There's light poles along the access drives. I don't know if there's, we didn't propose any additional lighting, but there's there's a light at the on that building, correct, Troy?
Yeah, in the the original proposal on the the new 2300 that there would be soffit lighting, which was approved. We were actually talking about maybe doing some balers along the new parking spots. We were cutting into the bank. That's something that we were talking about doing, or if you would like us to do them, but most likely we would probably do something along there.
Well, I guess my comment is you're, if you're going to have lighting, it's going to be need to be reviewed and approved.
Okay.
And I just saw the number of ADA client parking stalls. Did you check the overall count to make sure you have enough with the increase in parking spaces, Link?
Um. I believe so, but I can check again. We're still.
Check because if you have to add some in, you may need to add someone, but I'll need verification with the increase in the numbers of spaces that your accessible spaces are not more than the amount are not needed.
Okay.
That's all I have. Are there any trees? You're not removing any trees, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So this is a public hearing. And we're we could like to ask anybody who's interested in speaking about or asking questions about this application. Now is the time to do so.
Please raise your hand.
Yeah, I forgot at the beginning, raise raise your hand if you or that function is at the bottom of the screen. Just kind of wave your arms frantically and Jeff or Ramsey will see.
Keep it going because we have to flick around to see if there's anyone.
I don't see anybody.
I am not seeing anyone. I'm just going to go back one more time through. I'm not seeing anyone.
All right. Troy and Link, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is 4P0321 of Insight Development Incorporated owner for extension of a site plan approval, allowing construction of a single family dwelling between 225 and two, I'm sorry, 525 and 555 and Field Road. Is there someone here representing this applicant?
Yes. Thank you, members of the board. Fred Shelley from BME Associates joined tonight with Rudy Neufeld from Insight Development, the applicant and owner of the property. We are requesting an extension of the site plan approval to the site plans, which was approved back in June of 2019. The plans, it's like we're might be missing a little bit, but the plans included a proposed single family home on a roughly 0.37 acre parcel. And the houses to be connected to public utilities, including water and sanitary sewers. We did review trees that were to be removed from the site. The grading, all of that has been through the review and approval previously, as said, back in 2019. However, due to the COVID pandemic, presented some scheduling issues and setbacks. However, the applicant is prepared and ready to install the initial site development, including the site driveway and the sanitary sewer lateral. Basically, get all the development out of the right away, taken care of so that when and continue to actively market the site so that when he gets a buyer, they'll be able to proceed with the architectural review board, which is still required, and then button that up. As I said, Rudy is with us tonight. If Rudy have anything additional that you want to add to that, otherwise, we're happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Do you gentlemen understand that you need to pull all necessary permits to build your project? If the planning board was to give you the maximum extension, you'd have to June 19th to do so. If not, you will need to come back in for new site plan approval.
The applicant is aware of that. Thank you.
Ramsey, do you recall, did this have ARB approval when we when we?
No, I don't. I don't. I don't believe so, Bill. It's a single family home.
Yeah, okay.
And the site plan, if I could say, the the site plan has been signed by the Commissioner of Public Works and Town Engineer. Got hit with COVID.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with extending it out another month, but they don't have a lot of time. I'd be glad to help them any way I can.
Thanks.
All right. I don't personally have any questions. Fred, you're you're saying there's literally no changes to this document as approved previously.
That is correct.
All right. All right. Any any other board members have questions for Fred or Rudy?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
John, Pam.
I'm good.
David. Okay. And Karen. All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that cares to address this?
Let anybody raise their hand virtually in Zoom or turn your camera on and wave drums. Doesn't look like there's anybody. I don't see anyone.
All right.
Not seen anyone either, Jeff.
All right. Okay, Fred, thank you. Rudy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, that we will be moving on then to under new business. We have revised plans submitted for 9PNB1-20. This is application of Baptist Temple and owner and Clover Properties LLC for preliminary plan approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent for Clover Park Properties LLC. And one of its friends on August lives directly south of the subject property. We first appeared before the board virtually in in the fall of last year with our development proposal for the site, which involved the existing building is depicted on the plan, which is currently on the screen as well as a 10,000 square foot addition, which was the constructed on the northwestern part of the of the existing building along the Highland Avenue frontage. Our initial plan also included features such as parking along the along the easterly portion of the building along Clover Street. And pruning and removal of some trees that we thought were not in great shape on the site. Since that September meeting, we have been actively engaged in talking with our neighbors and refining our particular plans with regard to the site and taking COVID into effect into account in dealing with the use of the building itself. The net result of that is that we appeared before your board last month with pretty much the same site plan that you see the rendering for in front of you. And that is maintaining the existing building and building footprint of the of the Baptist Temple, maintaining the large green space area on the corner of Highland and Clover, maintaining all of the trees along the perimeter of the site, removing the parking along Highland Avenue and basically making the eastern entrances of the building and egress only and reconfiguring the parking lot to essentially reduce the parking field because the need for parking became less without the addition. The net result of all that is we think we have a plan which is a good plan for the site, very good plan for the site, as a matter of fact. And and we're here tonight to continue the discussion with the planning board. We do not believe that this matter is ready for final consideration of the preliminary site plan application, but our intention is to fully, fully vet, if you will, the any environmental issues under Seeker. The town planning board did opt for coordinator review and is lead agency under Seeker. And for that reason, we would be coming before the board and looking for determination significance before going on zoning board for the only variance, which is necessary on this right now, which is a use variance to allow this to be used for an office. With that introduction, I am going to turn it over to Matt Tomlinson, who is going to talk about the changes that that we have progress made since last month. Address engineering issues and a comment letter from a neighbors engineer which came in today. After Matt is done, I will address a letter which came from an attorney for the Country Club condominiums. And at that point, we will be prepared to answer any questions that the board may have. So with that, Matt.
Matt, we're not hearing you.
How's that, Ramsey? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you good now.
Great. Thanks, everybody. I see my son, Miles, use my computer for a Zoom meeting, so apologize for the wrong name.
I was wondering who Miles was.
I'm not smart enough to change that on my own. I need him to do it back for me. Thanks, Jerry, for that intro. And I just, before I dig into some of the details that I think we want to clarify or discuss briefly here tonight with the board, I wanted to just fill in what Jerry mentioned with a supplemental material that we submitted a couple of weeks ago that included response to comments both from the town staff as well as town engineer. We also clarified by resubmitting the planning to the planning board, the removal of any banked parking. Originally, we were looking at potentially banking some of the parking along the south side, but it wasn't very clear. And given that that existing space is currently paved, it didn't make sense to rip that out and then have to put it back in if necessary in the future, especially given the intention or clarification of both the daycare continuing an operation that's reflected in the traffic study as well as the proposed office use. So primarily, what was resubmitted was just some clarification items for questions that were asked by the board at the last meeting, response to comments and some turning movements. I wanted to briefly discuss the traffic study that was prepared and submitted to the town for consideration as well as to the county DOT and state DOT. That was prepared by SRF Associates with the latest date of February 2021 being consistent with what was submitted and the uses identified within the building that have been outlined in our proposal. And the conclusions and recommendations take into account the reduction in traffic on the neighboring roadways due to COVID through the process that the state DOT typically is encouraging consultants to utilize. It took into account the existing use of the church building as it stood today or over the last couple of years of the church, both with declining membership, but also other uses that were using the building, including the daycare. And then it did take into account the different uses that are being proposed, which include up to 8,000 square feet of medical office, the proposed general office use as well as the daycare being involved because we wanted to ensure that there was not going to be an impact to the neighboring roadways and also trying to identify what, if any, impacts there may be to neighbors at and or at the driveways. And so that that study concluded that the proposed peak trips in both morning and afternoon were relatively low compared to thresholds typically necessary to require a traffic study that there was no decrease in level of service at any of the neighboring roadway intersections. And those conclusions and recommendations as a result of the study and the traffic counts were submitted to the county DOT and the state DOT. And I believe that in our most recent application And I believe that in our most recent application to the town came a March 11th, 2021, letter from the state DOT concurring with the findings of that report and that no mitigation was necessary. And also a March 9th, 2021, letter from the county DOT with that same result of no significant impact to the neighboring roadways. So I think that that T has been crossed, if you will, relative to that traffic study. And it showed what we anticipated, but we wanted to go through that to ensure that we weren't just saying it. We had the numbers and the review of the agencies to demonstrate that as well. I want to jump to a couple of questions that I know have come up relative to the letter that Jerry referenced that was forwarded to our office and received by the town by Marquez and Associates. There are several questions or comments that were brought up that I think it'd be good for me to walk through point by point in order to clarify for the board, as I think some of the questions also mimic some of the responses in the town engineer letter that we had submitted along with the plans. So as Jerry mentioned, preliminary approval is not necessarily what we're looking for. We're looking to complete seeker at this point so that we can continue with our variance application. I'm gonna skip over any comment relative to previous applications as what we're proposing here is the final configuration of the project. I do want to note that the work limit line and a site disturbance limit are not one in the same thing. So we show a work limit line on our project and on our plans that is greater than the limits of disturbance. Several of the areas within our work limits on the project are existing asphalt pavement that will be resurfaced, reused, may just be seal coated, may be overlaid. And that was one of the questions by the town engineer relative to that. It also includes areas where there is work, but not necessarily where all of the ground will be disturbed in order to perform that work. For example, where lighting is going in or where trees are being planted. The work limit line encompasses all of that area, but many or much of the area within the work limit will not be disturbed or dug into in order to accommodate those. So the, those two things are consistent on our plan and in our proposal. And I just wanted to clarify the distinction between work limit and site disturbance as as there sometimes is confusion on that. The, I'm gonna let Jerry speak to the question on the contiguous when he gets into to a national historic places, when he gets into his discussion on some of the seeker items and the action being consistency. The question relative to a seeker long form not being required. A short form EAF was coordinated with with town staff and is appropriate for unlisted action. And so we believe that that has been provided as necessary. We don't show hydrant flow data on the plans. As Jerry mentioned, when we come in with preliminary, we'll have a full engineer's report. We do not anticipate any issues. We have been in contact with the water authority relative to service for this project. So that is not an issue and there's plenty of of water to service the project. The analysis on parking relative to 155 spaces that is consistent with town code for the proposed uses. And the analysis provided in this letter somewhat mixes existing uses that are not anticipated to be continued, which included concerts, arts and crafts group, the prayer group meetings, that kind of thing. Those will not be uses that continue if this proposal is successful and the building is converted to office use. So I do not believe that that analysis is consistent with what is being proposed, but our plan does demonstrate compliance with the town zoning code as well as demonstrating that the parking that is proposed will meet the needs of the developer in order to service his tenants for that. In the engineer's report, there's some question relative to sanitary flows and usage being lesser or greater than the peak loads of existing use. So the occupant loading within the building for the general office will be less or is anticipated to be less and then the existing when the church was full or at full capacity of the main sanctuary, as well as some of the other classrooms and the daycare use being consistent between the two is referenced that will not be leaving. And so a lot of usage and especially in the references, both plumbing code and the D E C hydraulic loading that is referenced in this letter are conservative values to really bridge or take into account the variations that you would expect across different medical office uses, general office uses for the most part. And one of the comments from the town engineer was relative to analyzing the capacity of the existing sanitary lateral and the condition of that sanitary lateral as a requirement for this project moving forward into construction, which we will be doing some exploration there in order to ensure that full service can be provided. So I as tenants are identified, those uses will be able to be drilled down further. But from a general approach, especially when determining if there are any impacts, the differences calculated between the existing uses, especially given the daycare that is in there and is anticipated to continue, really will not change significantly from what that max load was during existing conditions. There's some comment relative to paving condition, some various other comments relative to traffic comparing what was analyzed in the traffic study versus six single family homes. That is not our current proposal. As the board knows, our proposal is to utilize that for office. So while the, there is greater traffic than would be anticipated from six single family homes. That's not really relevant to the proposal that we have going currently, meaning that was not the test case for analysis that was analyzed and submitted for consideration to the to the two DOTs. So that's kind of a brief overview. Happy to drill down further into some of those comments if if the board so desires, but I didn't want to. I know that that letter was submitted for the record and I wanted to step through those with the board. So with that, Jerry, I can turn it back over to you relative to any comment on seeker. And then we can address any, any other comments the board may have or questions.
Yeah, let, let me jump in on on seeker point. It is totally up to the town as to which is which form, what short or full EAF is appropriate for a particular site in an unlisted action. For the most part, where you're dealing with no new construction and and basically keeping same structures, buildings and everything else. A short EAF is normally what is preferred and what normally happens. And that's the town opted for in this particular case. If it was something where we're constructing a large new building, if we were totally, totally changing the structures on the site, changing patterns of of traffic, for example, or anything else. There may have been a need for the full EAF, but that wasn't really necessary here for the town to do its analysis. So the short form was appropriate. With regard to other seeker issues that have been raised in the Boylan Code Letter, which is stated April 21st and received today. In dealing with the seeker issues, there are a couple of of matters, actually three, which had been raised in saying that their potential environmental adverse impacts or impacts on the environment was focused on as the creation of a material conflict with the community's current plans or goals is officially approved or adopted. In this particular case, the town's comprehensive plan is silent relative to this particular property. Town of Brighton, as many towns have done, sometimes identifies specific properties or specific areas for study and and review as part of their comprehensive plan. That was not done in this case with with any of the comprehensive plans of recent memory. So we then look to a lot of the criteria and language which occurs in the comprehensive plan document itself. And one that, and one that we have on this in in the plan is consistency and and really the question of whether this will foster a mix of residential and commercial investment that propose that promotes vitality and walkability. That is a standard which is in the comprehensive plan. And we believe that in fact, we do provide for that investment in our community in a way that is not going to impact the the character of the neighborhood. We'll talk about character in a few minutes. One other factor that we have relative to the comprehensive plan is the maintenance of trees. And I could be talking about this a couple of times because one of the signature aspects of this particular site, signature aspects of the site plan and of this neighborhood is having a large contiguous green space on the corner of Highland and Clover Street. The Baptist Temple and this particular configuration in green space has been on site since 1964. And and to that extent, it really has become ingrained in the character of the neighborhood itself. What we are doing by maintaining this building as opposed to trying to redevelop it into something else is we're able to have luxury of maintaining that green space and enhancing it in reality. So to that extent, we believe that we are in accordance with the community plans and goals. Second criteria that was cited was the impairment of character of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources or of existing community or neighborhood character. I'll go back to the engineering letter which was provided. And there was a question which was raised as to the Stone Toll and House. The Stone Toll and House is located on East Avenue. It is not visible from the site. It has no relationship to the site. There is no way that we can deem it to be substantially contiguous and having an impact. With regard to general neighborhood character, as stated before, we have a mix of of uses within this immediate area and within this neighborhood. We have single family residential to the south. John August is a resident there. We also have it to the east. We have it to the west of us on on Council Rock. We have condominiums, which could be considered somewhat of an anomaly, many of which are rental, and some people consider that to be essentially commercial. We have the rent, what used to be the Renaissance now called the venue, I believe, on East and and Penfield, which has a mix of uses within its building. It's got residential. It is approved for a restaurant. There have been medical offices located in it. So we do have a bit of a mix within this neighborhood. But I would say that if we talk about community character and neighborhood character, the character of this neighborhood is defined by its open green space that we are maintaining on this corner of of Highland and Clover. The third, third criteria that was cited was substantial change in the use or intensity of use of the land, including agricultural, open space or recreation resources or capacity to support existing uses. Fact of the matter is, again, we are maintaining the open space that is there. If we were to look at redevelopment, which we will show to the zoning boards economically unfeasible on the site for redevelopment for single family residential, it it would definitely change the character of this corner and would would change the feel completely because a lot of that green space would disappear. There'd be a number of extra driveways that'd be coming out onto the streets, et cetera. And to that extent, we believe that we are in in essence consistent. With regard to the existing use of the site, the existing use of the site is pointed out by the neighbors engineer currently is composed of a lot of different factors. There are a lot of uses in there. There's a church in there. There's prayer groups, concerts, arts and crafts. There's a spirituality center. There are a lot of uses that are on that site. And a lot of those uses actually operate during what most people believe should be a time where we really don't want to have inconsistency with with the neighborhood. Churches would have do and would have a tendency to bring more traffic on Sundays, for example. Offices that we are proposing would not. We don't anticipate that there would be nighttime traffic. There often with prayer groups or or some of the other uses on the site. There would be, there would be nighttime uses. We don't anticipate there'll be nighttime uses on this particular site. As a matter of fact, our lighting is designed to meet the town requirements. It's also designed to be on dimmer. So at sundown, it will be basically security lighting that will be available on the site. And that would be the full extent of it. So to that extent, we believe that we are benefiting the overall neighborhood by our proposal to repurpose the building as it currently stands. I'm gonna address a few other comments which were raised as part of the the letter by by Mr. Wood, which was well drafted and I do want to commend him for that. He did talk about some site plan issues and issues that are in the code relative to adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic access and circulation. Matt did speak specifically to the fact that the traffic has been reviewed by the county and the state. And my understanding is also been reviewed by town staff, even though we're at the intersection of two county roads and adjacent to or not far away from the state road. The town has weighed in and reviewed that as well. With regard to the vehicular traffic on site, we're basically in the same place as it currently is located and it is pretty much shielded and guarded by the building itself. We are protecting adjacent properties from noise, glare, unsightliness and other objectionable features. Again, we talked about the lighting and what we are doing with that. Noise buffering is going to occur by by screening and additional landscaping that we intend to provide as part of the site. We do not believe that this use internal to internal to site and with this orientation is going to have any impact outside of the of the site itself. With that, I don't know if there's anything more that we that either John August, who is on this call, who is one of the principals and adjacent neighbor to the south or Matt Tomlinson has to offer. If they do not, we'll stop our presentation here. It will be available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Jerry, I just wanted to, I just wanted to jump in real quick. Sorry, Bill. There is a slight increase in impervious with some of the parking immediately adjacent to the building. But we have eliminated, and I think we spoke about this last time we were before the board, the need for a variance for lock coverage in the rear yard as we are reducing the total amount of pavement in the rear yard, which is really to the south and to the east. So I did want to mention that for the record as well.
Great, thanks for that clarification, Matt.
Jerry and Matt, thank you. Ramsey, just a point of clarification. We, we were not obligated to do a coordinated review on this. This is an unlisted action and the town went to the extra step of making sure that the impacts were thoroughly examined by coordinating the review of seeker.
That's correct.
Thank you.
As directed by the board. The review was coordinated. The involved agencies all agreed to the planning board to be lead agency. At our last planning board meeting, you did declare yourself lead agency. And under the seeker regulations, the time has come that we need to make a determination of significance, which will also allow other involved agencies to continue on with their business as it relates to the project.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. For preliminary, we would need to know that this has been to the. preliminary, we would need to know that this has been to the uh architectural review board. Uh and the variances have been secured, but at this point uh the this application, uh Jerry, could you confirm whether you've been to ARB at all?
We have not been to ARB yet. I I just talked to John August earlier today and um we could be seeking to appear before them conceptually later this month. We haven't filed a formal application yet. Um but we're, our intention is to uh is to advance that and to move that forward uh likely during the month of April, once the uh once the ZOPI board determination is made, provided that uh that we are uh in that position.
Okay. Thank you. I I don't have any further questions. Any other board members have questions for the applicants?
Karen.
I'm all set. I'm all set.
Pam, thank you. John.
I'm good. No, I'm good. I'm good. This is John. I'm good. No question.
Jason, thank you. Okay, uh I need Ramsey, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Um Matt, um what, is there a reduction in paved area as part of the project? I just wanted to confirm.
There's a slight increase in the total amount of paving, but there is a decrease in the rear yard, which allowed us to avoid that variance. And I believe that that was identified as roughly seventy-five hundred square feet of total increase in impervious on the green space. It that is not in the rear yard. That's total on the site. The rear yard actually is a slight reduction from just over fifty percent to forty-nine point six percent. I believe that I did submit a uh a green space uh figure with the application for the board's consideration. That may help.
So the existing lot coverage has been reduced to forty-nine point six percent from fifty-two.
From fifty-two point three. That's correct. Yep.
What is the area of disturbance for the site improvement?
Total area disturbance is twenty-six thousand square feet.
Okay.
And that that does take into account some areas of pavement that we believe will have to be fully reconstructed, Ramsey. So that we will do a little bit of exploration on that asphalt paving.
Okay.
If there's enough subbase there where we can leave stone and not disturb the dirt underneath that may come down, but we wanted to be conservative in the number for your board's consideration here on Seeker.
Now, Matt, I I I if, excuse me if I uh if I if I missed this, but you haven't talked about the proposed lighting, have you? The height of the lighting, the type of lighting?
Yep. So that was included in our lighting plan. So the height of the poles will be sixteen feet in total. It'll be a fourteen-foot pole with a two-foot concrete base. They will be dark sky compliant and on timers is the intention to dim the intensity other than what's necessary for uh security. Uh I did note that there is some spill at the right of ways in order to light the entrances adequately. Uh we can adjust or massage some of those locations right at the entrances if if the board so desires, but they mimic the location of the existing light poles at those entrances currently, Ramsey. And again, it's not anticipated that those lights will be on uh more than probably six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night. And then they would be dimmed or turned off other than for security purposes.
And uh my last, it's a two-part question, I guess. Um you're retaining all the mature trees in the front yards of this property. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you're also uh providing additional landscaping throughout the project site?
Yeah, we've tried to incorporate several landscape islands within uh the parking fields, uh specifically where we're expanding the parking on the west side of the building. We're adding some trees uh in additional screening in areas where we're removing existing pavement at the south side of the site. And then we are also providing some screening plantings on the north end of the site where we have some parking with headlights headed out towards Highland Avenue and the existing uh mechanical and dumpster space. We will have an enclosure, but we're also proposing some juniper plantings or some screening plantings um that'll be taller columnar in some planting beds to provide some softening of those uh near the north end of the building.
I'm sorry.
Uh my my question is, do you know if the dumpster is currently enclosed?
All right. Do you know the answer to that question?
It is with a very um minor fencing.
Okay.
Not very substantial, not solid. It's got some slats.
I have no further questions, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramsey.
Well, uh I've got a couple. Uh this is Ken Gordon.
Hey, Ken.
He um Matt, there was a comment and I think it's in the Boilin Code letter, but uh it might have been in uh Mr. Heingard's letter. Uh the comments on the fact that although um at peak, the intersections would not fail. Um that overall during the day, the medical office use is gonna generate more traffic on a regular basis than the existing uses. Um I don't know if it's for Matt or maybe Jerry. Um can you just comment on how that does or does not constitute a significant impact on traffic for this project?
It, to our view, it does not create a significant adverse impact. While the traffic study itself and traffic methodology uh requires a study of peak hour traffic and and peak hour uh numbers. Uh levels of service not only are not gonna fail, they're in fact not gonna be degraded at all by the uh by the use of at the various intersections. So uh they, in accordance with normal methodology, we are, we are fine. Uh the review by the state and the review by the county, if they believe that there was a traffic issue uh which already existed, which required analysis of hours other than peak hours, they typically would come and would state that we have to analyze uh those off-peak hours. Sometimes if you're near a school, sometimes if you're near a facility that has shift work, which does have some off-hour uh peaks that occur, they may require analysis at that time, but the state nor the county uh required any, any of that study uh to occur.
Correct. Yeah, and Ken, if I could, um by default, the area roadways in off-peak hours have less travel on them. And so that peak study or those peak hour study is the quote-unquote worst case. So while there may be some additional trips to what's called the generator or the project, uh that does not have a greater impact than the peak traffic when the peak occupancy on the roadways adjacent to the project uh are occurring. And so that's why, to Jerry's point, those those off-peak times are typically not considered, especially in a case like this.
And when you say not considered, we're we're talking, I mean, there may be impacts.
Not identified as a significant issue that needed further study. Correct. Thank you.
And um actually, my other question, just I wanna get this in the public hearing is for Mr. Boehner. Um so there was some discussion about why a short-form EAF. Can you just confirm that uh the town did request a short-form EAF and just talk a little bit about why that is?
Um the short-form EIF was uh required by town. We did not require a a long form. Um we went through the hearings. Um nothing new came up to warrant the use of a long form. Um we did require the traffic study, which was an into identified potential impact. We did take a good hard look at that. Uh the short form is the form that is normally used for these type of projects.
And I think um I think I think Bill commented, maybe it was Bill, um kind of a short-form EAF uh is typically used for an unlisted uh action. Is that, is that our typical?
Yes, that that is uh correct. We don't um often do coordinated reviews, which we did in this case. That was an additional step that the planning board.
But that's, that's above and beyond.
Yeah, which is the most important step is to let all the other um agencies that are out there that may be able to identify potential impacts, let us know if there is one. Nothing came up.
Thanks. Uh that's all I have for now.
Okay. Uh one more time for board members. Any other questions?
No, 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 no questions. Thank you.
All right. All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application?
Please raise your hand.
See, and Mick Wood?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Nick.
Okay. This is, this is Mick Wood from uh Boilin Code. I, as has been, I think, indicated already in the meeting, we represent the Country Club Condominium Board of Managers. I believe there's uh at least a couple of members of the board that are in attendance at the meeting on behalf of our client. Uh we're opposing the project. We submitted a letter to the board earlier today that's been referred to and is included in the final agenda communications, but I do wanna take the opportunity to highlight a few things um that were raised in the letter, both with respect to the planning board's seeker review and the preliminary site plan review. Uh with respect to the seeker review, we uh do respectfully submit that the planning board should issue a positive declaration under seeker and invite and uh require an environmental impact statement because the proposed project has the potential for one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. And I just wanna address uh and and Jerry has obviously already referred to them, but a couple of the um items that uh uh are implicated by the project and uh we believe should result in a positive declaration and in finding an environmental uh significant adverse environmental uh impact. Uh so the first is, is the project does create a material conflict with the community's uh current plans or goals, and in particular, it conflicts with uh not only the town's zoning ordinance since it involves a commercial use in a low-density residential district, but also the town's comprehensive uh plan update. Uh i- and the fact is that the comprehensive plan update does identify certain areas within the town that may be appropriate for uh changes in land use. And this is not one of them. So this is not identified as uh an area of the town where there should be a change in the land use. But of course, the the proposed project is proposing just that, to change it from uh this area from residential use to a commercial use. And again, not only is this a residential area, so it's, this particular district is a low-density residential district and this would be bringing a a commercial use into that area. Uh also with respect to the town's comprehensive plan, one of the objectives as stated in the plan is protecting the town's established residential neighborhoods. Uh it's our view that putting an office park on this property certainly does not protect the established residential neighborhoods that surround the property on all sides and include low-density neighborhoods to the immediate west, south, and southeast of the property. So the project uh is in fact inconsistent with both the town's zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So that's, that's one criteria that is impacted or or that negatively impacts the environment with respect to this project. Uh secondly, it can be expected that the project will impair the character of the neighborhood because, again, it's bringing a completely new commercial use into a residential neighborhood. The medical offices in particular carry the potential for a high volume of patient visits and are going to have a negative impact. This isn't a situation where uh you're putting, you know, a two-family residence in an area that's zoned for single families, but it's putting a commercial use. And again, a district not only is zoned as residential, but low-density residential and is surrounded on all sides by property that is zoned as residential and by all outside appearances that we appears to be used only for residential purposes. There was a, there was a statement um at, I think, last month's planning board meeting. And again, it's, it's been brought up uh today about a a restaurant. So I believe that at one point there was a restaurant in uh the venue building, which is, which was formerly the Renaissance. Uh but I also believe that restaurant is no longer there. Not only is it no longer there, there, but that, that property is not immediately contiguous to uh the subject property and has got five ninety running along uh one side of it. Uh and by my reading of the zoning code, uh that restaurant wouldn't be a permitted use. Maybe it had a a use variance or was a prior non-conforming use, but um uh again, by my reading of the code, that wouldn't have been permitted there. There's also uh been a reference to medical offices uh at the last meeting surrounding the property. And there are not any uh any noticeable indications of medical offices on any of the immediately surrounding properties. I don't see any signage or anything to indicate that there's um medical offices in any of those uh properties. And again, just as is the case with the restaurant, uh that in my reading of the code would not be a permitted use in any of, in the uh districts immediately surrounding the property. So uh would have at least had to have a use variance, I believe. In 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 addition, with respect to the overall impact of the neighborhood, I went back and looked through some of the prior correspondence to the board and in connection with the November meeting, there appears to uh have been letters from at least nine uh neighbors who um were raising concerns about the project. So uh that certainly shows there there are, that the people living in the neighborhood uh are concerned about the proposed project. And you've also got uh neighbors, I believe, directly across from uh the project on Clover Avenue where I, on Clover, who are represented here uh tonight. Another indication that the uh project will have a a a negative impact on the neighborhood. Um finally, with respect to the third criteria that is uh impacted with respect to the seeker review, you know, the project certainly will result in a substantial change in the use of the land. It changes the use from a church and daycare to a commercial use, which is obviously going to be more intense, particularly with respect to the patient visits that are gonna be associated with those medical offices. So we believe those impacts aren't minor or small and show that the project uh will have a significant adverse impact on the environment, particularly with respect to the character of the neighborhood and require an environmental impact statement in any decision uh on application for site plan approval uh should certainly be delayed. With respect to uh preliminary site plan approval, if the planning board does consider that at tonight's meeting, and we believe it, it shouldn't, um there are again a number of criteria that the board must consider in determining whether to grant that approval and uh many of which uh militate against granting the approval. We've already talked about the overhaul impact on the neighborhood, which is one of the criteria, so I won't belabor that uh point. But as I've indicated, the, given the commercial use that would be introduced, we certainly believe that will have a negative impact on the environment and the neighborhood. Uh conformance with the town master plan is also another, again, a criteria for preliminary site plan approval. And again, I won't belabor that point, but I've indicated why the plan is not consistent with the uh master plan. Vehicular traffic is a third criteria, and I know a traffic study has been Vehicular traffic is a third criteria, and I know a traffic study has been submitted to the town. The the point with respect to that I was making in the my letter with respect to the off-peak hours is that the while the traffic study studies, of course, the the peak hours, you know, can't be denied that traffic in the area and those off-peak hours will increase. So regardless of whether that puts an undue load on the services, that is an impact on the neighborhood to have traffic going in and out all during the day as it doesn't have currently. And again, particularly the medical office use is going to significantly impact and increase the intensity of traffic throughout the day. With respect to the parking, uh, it's a little unclear to there's been references to the impervious space with the parking lot. By my reading of the plans that have been submitted to the town, uh, in particular, I'd refer the board and and Mr. Boehner to the green space figure that was submitted by Marathon Engineers on uh prior to the March 17th Planning Board Meeting. And that indicated that due to net increases in the parking area, the impervious areas of the property would increase by a net of 7,545 square feet, which is approximately 7.2% more than the existing impervious area. So again, that I think the board has that plan from prior submissions, and I'd ask you to take a look at that because based on the uh parking area that is being added, it it seems to me, and I believe as is indicated in that plan, the overall impervious services are being increased by the increases in the parking area, particularly there's new parking area to the southwest of the uh building and then additional parking to the to the south of the building. So lastly, I'll just comment. I know it's been discussed, but the the uh with respect to the lighting, the plan that was submitted by Marathon Engineer shows lights light spill over from the property, even though, as I understand it, the park they're trying to sort of underlight the parking area. And the point there is that that really just further goes to the incompatibility of this uh proposed use in this area or trying to get the lighting low, but it still is spilling over the property lines too much. So for all those reasons, we submit um that if the town were to approve the or were to consider the preliminary site plan uh this evening, that it should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Uh, who's who else is up? I see a hand of Allison Bartlett.
Mary Jane.
Is Mary Jane first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, uh, Mary Jane Mann. Um, I'm on the Board of Country Club Condominiums. I'm also a real estate broker for over 30 years. Couple of things. I'm a little confused, Mr. Goldman, about um why it's not appropriate to use the stone tollen as a an example.
Your questions to the board will.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why why would stone tollen was not appropriate to be used as an example, but the venue is, okay? Neither one of them are visible from this particular area, okay? The other thing I think everyone needs to consider is not only will have a negative impact on quality of life, but it's going to have a negative impact on value. It's clearly whenever you put something is allowed to be a commercial, have a commercial variance or be used commercially, and it's next to residential, the residential always is impacted negatively. And you are completely surrounded by residential here. Okay?
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Allison Bartlett.
Allison, you're up.
Hi, good evening. My name's Allison Bartlett from Harder Sea Crest in Emery, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our clients, John and Erica Stanit, Jonathan Friedberg, and Laura Calvi, who are long-term residents of properties adjacent to the 1075 Clover Street property. That's the subject of tonight's preliminary site plan application. We've reviewed the letter submitted by Mr. Wood as co-counsel for the Country Club Condominium Board of Managers for tonight's meeting and opposition to the application. And we agree with the points raised in Mr. Wood's letter and reassert the position stated therein. In addition, the application lacks sufficient information to properly evaluate impacts of light pollution on the surrounding residences. The applicant team just confirmed that the that the lighting will be dark sky compliant, but will there be any lights mounted on the buildings? And if so, what's the intensity and how will they be shielded from the residences? We also note that the report from the town engineer pointed out that the light spill from the proposed development will emit up to two-foot candles across Clover Street and the Highland Avenue rights-of-way. The town engineer references guidance stating that light spill from commercial properties should not exceed 0.1-foot candles. The proposed lighting plan therefore far exceeds that guideline, and light spill should arguably be even less when the commercial property is in the center of a residential area like the cases here. I also want to briefly emphasize how the traffic study is misleading and how the trip generation information reflects the intensity of use of the proposed development and its inappropriate nature within a residential neighborhood. First, the traffic study analyzes only one peak hour in the morning and one peak hour in the evening. And you can tell by the trip counts that it doesn't act account for the majority of trips by parents dropping off and picking up their children from the daycare. It's likely that many of these trips are occurring outside of or on the fringes of these peak hours to allow the parents to get to work on time. In addition, patient visits to and from the medical offices will be studied throughout the day, which will increase the intensity of current conditions and will adversely impact the residential character of the neighborhood. The letter submitted by Marquis and Associates, included in tonight's meeting and discussed earlier, also highlights the intensity of use of the proposed development in comparison to residential use. Comparing the conclusions of the trip generation study against a six-lot, single-family residential use developed under RLA zoning, the engineer found that the proposed use generates 38 times more traffic for the AM peak entering and 21 times more traffic for the PM peak exiting than a six-lot, single-family residential use would generate. This comparison is highly relevant because it compares the trips of the proposed use against a permitted use in this low-density residential district. We also note that we plan to show the ZBA that a single-family development is viable while keeping open space at the corner. And finally, the day-long traffic may not mean changes in service, but it is indicative of a significant increase in the intensity, which isn't appropriate in a residential district. Such intensity of the proposed use will have a detrimental impact on the character of this residential neighborhood. We respectfully request that the planning board issue a positive declaration under seeker and require an environmental impact statement be prepared to more fully address the potential adverse impacts of this project and that the planning board therefore not approve the application for preliminary site plan approval until it has completed seeker review and unless and until the applicant has obtained a use variance for this project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Others wish to speak? Ramsey or Jeff, you see anybody?
I don't see anybody. If you want to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom or turn your video on and um wait, hit the screen and we can unmute you. All right. I don't I don't see. I'm not seeing.
I'm not seeing anyone either.
Right? Okay, um, I do believe that was our last public meeting.
Bill, before we leave, I just want to say that I did get a communication this afternoon dated Wednesday, April 21st from a Luke Denton. And it says, as an adjoining property owner located at 2619 Highland Avenue, I'm writing in support of the proposed office conversion at 1075 Clover Street. The most recent proposed site plan increases green space and softens the impact of the parking lot. The plan in use will work well for the area. And that is signed once again sincerely, Luke Denton from 2619 Highland Avenue. I'd like that to be added into the record.
Thank you.
And as a communication.
Bill, this is Matt Tomlinson. I'd like to uh address a couple of those comments if I could briefly.
Um.
Or would you?
Matt, I I guess for the record, go go ahead. I I'm not sure the board needs a response, but go ahead for the record, just.
Okay, so I I believe I mentioned it in my proposal, the reduction in impervious is in the rear yard and the green space is consistent with the site plans that we have submitted. There is a 7,500 square foot increase in impervious. I believe that that's consistent. Then from a lighting spill, we'll address this with the town engineer, but those guidelines are typically to exterior property lines, not to rights-of-way that are recommended in the IES. And we are well below or have no light spill to any of the surrounding property lines that are not right-of-way. So I believe that we are consistent with IES guidelines. But again, we will coordinate that with the town engineer as we finalize drawings.
Any other comments, Matt?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's so that was our last uh hearing for the night. Um, I believe before we take up the matter of signs, why don't we go back to the beginning here and discuss these applications? Our first one is is everybody doing okay, Ramsey?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Stenographers, everybody's good? Rota?
Brody, you good? She would say if she wasn't.
All right.
Yes, I'm yes, I'm good.
Thank you, Rota.
Thank you. All right, our first uh discussion is on application 4P 02-212290 East Properties LLC. So this is just down the next property from the Stone Tollan House to the to the north. And this was the application for uh expansion of the parking and addition of the uh handicap access ramp. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Move by Babcock, second by Delaney.
Correct.
To close the hearing.
Yep.
Altman.
Aaron.
Altman.
Hi.
Bryce.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Hearing is closed.
Do we have a motion uh on this application?
I move the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board approves application 4P 0221 based on the testimony given, plan submitted, and 22 conditions.
Is there a second?
Babcock Steiner seconds.
Do we have any discussion? Ramsey, are you you're comfortable? Our conditions, um the testimony given testimony given says that that pipe will be buried.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I want to ask you, do you want any conditions about curbing?
Well, I I would advise it. I I think that um the site is getting uh rutted along the edges of the pavement and uh that's gonna be a pretty steep slope. That will get some runoff and I I just I I advise it for the for the
Okay.
applicant.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up because it was brought up. Okay, I have nothing else left.
Okay, uh, other any other we're we're moved and seconded. Is there any other comment or discussion? All right, why don't we call the roll?
Osowski.
Nate.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Bryce.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Motion passes approved with conditions.
Thank you. Our next application to discuss is 4PO3 21 of application of insight development. Uh, this is the application to renew or extend extension of site plan approval uh for the new home on Penfield Road. We have a motion to close the hearing.
I'll move we close the public hearing.
Delaney, clo- motions. I got Altman seconding.
Any discussion? Uh, Ramsey, please call the roll.
Member Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Bryce.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Hearing is closed.
Thank you. All right, this is for an extension of the approval dating back to 2019 pandemic, so uh like extension on this. Because um, do we have a motion? Anyone care to make one?
I'll move the board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board approves 4P 0321 based on the testimony given, the plan submitted, and the three conditions.
I think there's six conditions.
We have a second from John. Did you?
I think there's three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking. I was looking at the negative declaration. Never mind.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Jason.
Jason, sorry. Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, Altman.
Hi.
Bryce.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Application is approved with conditions.
Thank you. Our third application tonight is uh we are not we're not taking up the uh, I'm sorry, the application number 9P NV1-20. There the action tonight is for uh seeker and not, I don't believe we're at a point to issue a determina- an approval on preliminary site plan. So let's um in this in this case, either Ramsey or Ken, uh, do we close the public hearing? Or do we keep that open? Because this is this is just a part of that action.
So what we can do is we can close the public hearing relative to the secret determination only and leave table uh the uh application for site plan. So you would need two separate motions.
All right, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing relative to uh secret determination. for application 9P NV1-20.
I'll second.
Delaney.
It was Delaney, yeah. We'll, we'll take up the issue of preliminary after we call the roll on this.
We need a second.
Pam did.
I thought you made the motion.
No, I did.
Oops, sorry. Having a rough night, okay. Member Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
The hearing for Seeker is closed.
All right, do we, let's, let's take up the matter of Seeker.
Yeah, that would, that would be correct.
And then we'll worry about does anyone care to make a motion?
We would need a motion to adopt the negative declaration prepared by staff or otherwise to make a determination of significance relative to this project under Seeker.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion. I, and Ken, I'm sorry, I don't do this that often, but I'll make the motion to adopt the negative declaration prepared by staff. Are no, can, there are no conditions.
And we need a second.
I'll second.
That's Jason Babcock Steiner, second. I have one minor revision in the second paragraph. The sixth sentence should insert the word rear and it should read, the existing rear lot coverage has been reduced to 49.6% from 52.3%.
Second paragraph, Ramsey?
Second paragraph.
Under?
Noise visual.
Noise visual.
Yes.
And member Price and member Babcock Steiner, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion to adopt the negative declaration?
So approved.
Yep.
If I could just make a couple of comments.
Yes, please.
Preliminary to discussion. So the issue before the board now is under Seeker. And, and let's be clear about this. Seeker does not require you to make a determination that the project has no impact. You could make a determination that the project has no impact and issue a negative declaration, but you can also make that same determination of having a negative declaration adopted by determining that the impacts, the adverse environmental impacts that the project may have are not significant. And so minor or small impacts are not significant and therefore would lead you to the conclusion that there is in fact grounds for a negative declaration. In other words, no need for an environmental impact statement. I also want to just make some comments regarding some of the points made by the Boil and Code Firm. The, one of the arguments that I think I understood was that because the comprehensive plan is silent on what the particular use of this property should be, that that creates a need for finding a significant environmental impact. In fact, what the secret regulations tell us is that in order to determine that the criteria actually is that there is a material conflict with the comp plan and it would be a difficult determination. I, I would say contrary to the regulations to say that a material conflict exists because the comp plan is silent on this property. Moreover, relative to the impact on the historic property nearby, specifically the Stone Tolan House was mentioned. Again, the criteria is that there would be an adverse impact on the Stone Tolan House, different than the impact that the existing use has based upon the plan that you have in front of you. Again, that is what the criteria that Seeker asks you to determine that there would be an impairment of the character or quality of the Stone Tolan House based upon this plan, different than what the current use on the property is. And the other point that I think was being made is that it would introduce a completely new commercial use and have an impact on the negative impact or an adverse impact on the neighborhood. And in fact, I believe that the record both from the hearing last time and today would indicate that we know of at least some medical office use in the East Avenue Tower directly across the street. So there already is commercial and specifically medical office in the immediate neighborhood around the property. There was also a mention of some contradictory information relative to traffic impacts. Again, impacts that will be felt in the neighborhood with traffic going in and out of the medical offices may exist, but the question for the board is, are those impacts significant? And adversely significant in a manner that would lead you to determine that an environmental impact statement would need to be prepared. So in looking at the issues, it is for the board to take a hard look at all of these issues, all of the criteria. And I think it's been very helpful to have both, both sides make their presentation, both the sponsor and the project opponents make their presentations because I, I believe that all of the adverse impacts raised by the project opponents have in fact been addressed by the project sponsor. It is up to the board and the exercise of your discretion as to whether you believe that these impacts are significantly adverse. Or if the impacts are not significantly adverse and therefore you could issue this negative declaration. So I, I hope that's helpful. I, I'm happy to answer any other questions as to the standards that the board would need to address in reaching this determination.
So can you say that the comprehensive plan does not make any statement on this particular property? And that's true. But I think one of the points they made was the comprehensive plan does say that we should make an effort to maintain the character of existing neighborhoods. And the question is whether this actually does that or not.
Sure, I, I think that if you believe that this project will have a significant adverse impact on the neighborhood, then that is one criteria that could be considered in determining that an environmental impact statement would be needed. And in that case, if you made that determination, David, then you would say that you would want to see an environmental impact statement prepared and, and a full EIS. The question that I, I think is sort of raised here is whether any project, not just this project, but where any project is seeking to change a use that is not consistent with current zoning, does that in and of itself necessitate the finding that there is a significant adverse environmental impact? I can tell you under the secret regs, the answer is no, even type one actions, which this is not a type one action. Even type one actions, you can have a negative declaration on. So the mere fact that there is a proposed change in use, a use that is proposed that is not presently zoned is not in and of itself a, if you will, a a factor that must lead to a finding of significance. It is certainly within your discretion to make that determination, either positively or negatively. So, so I, I would look at the information, and I think you've been given good information by the project sponsor. There's been some, I, I would say, I would call them unsubstantiated at this point in time. Allegations that the project medical offices might have a negative economic impact on property values. I, I don't see any data for that in the record. I don't, I don't see any. Similarly with the traffic, I don't see any alternative traffic study that was presented to you that would tell you that the traffic impacts are going to be in any way significantly adverse to the neighborhood. I think it would be again, a, a difficult lift to find that there is an adverse impact on the neighborhood, but that is certainly within your discretion.
Thank you, Ken. So we are, we do have a motion and a second. Board members, this is time to discuss maybe the fact, one of the points that David brought up or any of the points that Ken brought up. Is okay. David, you're, you've, you've said your piece.
I just wanted some clarification on that.
Okay. Okay. David, you were on the comp committee. I, I believe the, the point on residential neighborhoods is is in there. I did go back and read the, the comp plan on this and silent to this particular parcel and the comp plan, the way it was structured this time was looking at five, I believe it was five distinctly different character areas. And the principles that were to be applied, you know, are those planning principles that do encourage the diversity of use and encourage the walkability of a neighborhood to create some additional vitality. And I, I believe this use, the proposed use will do that as good or better than the former use of the building. We would like to see it go further, but that's not what's on the table. So I have no objection to the determination and I believe the way the determination is read or is written accurately states the little or absolutely no adverse impact caused by this project. Other, other board members have comments or questions?
Reread the motion, please.
Rota, can you help us with that?
And what do you, what do you need?
We, we need the motion that I made reread.
I had gotten a new writer.
Karen, I, I believe planning board adopts the negative declaration as prepared by town staff.
Okay, thank you.
And it was with the minor revision that I called out and corrected.
Yeah, the, hey, this is John, the boilerplate that we have for making motions. Okay, I don't know how to fix that.
I think that's Rota's feedback.
Okay, that'll fix it.
Okay. In, in our boilerplate that we have for making motions regarding Seeker, the, the first part of the statement says, I move that the planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. And it goes on to say, the planning board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff. I think it's important that we have that initial statement in there that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment. You know, per, per the discussion that Ken Gordon says, yeah, but we're not saying there are no impacts. We're saying that it will not have a significant impact.
And, and I'll just read from the proposed negative declaration that Bill moved to adopt. What it states is that in two places, actually, in the heading under reasons supporting this determination, the negative declaration states, well, actually, at the very beginning of the negative declaration, the second paragraph, the negative declaration states, the Brighton Planning Board as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared under reasons supporting this determination. It again states, the town planning board finds that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment based upon the following findings. And then there are a number of findings tend to be specific. After that 10th finding, it is again stated that pursuant to Seeker, based on the above mentioned information documentation, testimony correspondence and findings. And after examining the relevant issues, including all relevant issues raised and recommendations offered by involved and interested agencies and town staff, the lead agency determines that the project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, which constitutes a negative declaration and therefore secret does not require further action relative to the project. And then the lead agency goes on to make additional determinations as set forth in paragraphs A through E of the negative declaration.
Bill, you're on mute.
Does, okay, so I, I agree with both with John and Ken on that. I, I merely just stated that we were adopting the negative declaration in the top of the form says negative declaration. I assumed everything under that was then entered into the record in all of those statements that you just made, Ken.
Correct, yeah. It, the motion is to adopt the draft negative declaration as prepared by staff. So I was just addressing John's comment. You're correct, John, the negative declaration should state that. And I'm just reiterating that it does in fact state exactly what you wished it to state.
I mean, do I, do I need to amend?
No, you, no, you do not because your motion is to adopt the draft that is in. No, you, no, you do not because your motion is to adopt the draft that is in the packet.
With the revision noted.
Thank you, Ramsey, yes.
All right.
I have a, I have a motion by Price, second by Babcock Steiner.
All right. Is everybody, well, go ahead and call the, call the roll.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner. Babcock Steiner. You're on mute?
Sorry. Hi.
Okay, so, um, I?
Yes.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Motion passes, the neg deck is adopted as revised.
Ramsey, you didn't call me.
You didn't get Delaney.
Delaney, I'm sorry.
Hi, it's okay. Hi.
Hi, so, okay, the neg deck is adopted as revised.
Thank you.
And now I think you want to take up a motion, if it pleases the board, to table the application for site plan approval.
That's right.
I move the board tables application nine P N B one twenty, based on the testimony given and plans submitted, the nineteen items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a, to have a complete application.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Delaney. Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
The application is tabled.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
We are at the point of discussing our sign applications. What do we, do we have three of them tonight?
Yes, we do. Jeff, if you wanted, get the signs up.
The first sign is sign number sixteen oh four for the chiropractor at seven forty-nine East Sun Red Road. It was denied by, done out of, just by the architecture of the board.
They never came back with more information, is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, they didn't meet the table criteria of the board.
So this, this one says table, but you're saying it was actually denied without prejudice?
Yes, it was.
They had taken it at one time for them to resubmit. Is that correct, Jeff?
What's that?
My understanding is that the A R B tabled the application to get revised drawings based on the conditions of the A R B, is that correct?
That's correct, and the.
They have not made this mission.
Yes, and that's why it was denied.
Okay, should we?
Not denied without prejudice, I can bring something else back.
Yeah, okay. Move to deny without prejudice, application sixteen oh four, upper cervical chiropractor, chiropractic of Rochester.
I'll second that.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Muted.
Muted, John.
Hi.
There you go. The next one, Jeffrey.
Uh, the next sign is number sixteen oh five, it's for the Starbucks that's going in on Monroe Ave. They have building face signs and, and other signs around the property that meet the criteria set forth and they approved incentive zoning.
A R B approved these as, as presented?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I looked at these. Make a motion to approve application sixteen oh five Starbucks as, as presented and approved by A R B.
I'll second that.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Next application is application sixteen oh six for a sign at for Lakeside Restoration. It has not, it did not go to A R B because it needs to get its certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission and their meeting tomorrow night.
So table. They, they do have a temporary up there.
They do.
Okay, I moved to table application sixteen oh six, Lakeside Restoration One. Lakeside Restorations, three Monroe Avenue. Ending, ending whatever.
Aaron, that was a second. Uh, member Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner. I hear you, Jason.
Hi.
There we go.
Okay.
Fader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Motion passes, application is tabled.
Ramsey, you forgot me again.
Delaney.
Hi.
I'm sorry. I think that was everything we have on the agenda for tonight.
Hey.
Rhonda, thank you.
Thank you.
And we got a, quite a few, not like big projects for next month, but we have quite a few applications.
Right.
We'll be a little bit busier. Now I thank you.
Good to hear. All right, everybody.
All right, everyone, good night, thank you.
Good night.
Hi.
Everyone, have a good month.
Bye bye.